Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, September 28th. We apologize for the slight delay, but we're ready to get started. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, everybody. Mr. Clerk, would you take us through tonight's agenda, please?
Sure, we have an appointment at 6:30 PM with, well, not 6:30, but 6:30 PM with Lynch Marina and Associates to give us an update on the FY '19 audit. And we have 12 action items that we have to work on as well.
Great, thank you very much. First, we will do open forum. I apologize again for the delay, but open forum. Is anyone here for open forum? Mr. Doucette?
Hi, my name's Bernie Doucette, 101 Sherwood Circle. And this week here, earlier this week, my daughter-in-law took the grandchildren down at the Spigone Playground, and it was a complete mess, the whole field. I walked all around the field, papers all over the place. It was just trash. Barrels were overfilled. I do want to thank everybody involved, Rebecca and Peter. And I do want to thank the Highway Department because they did get it cleaned up on Friday. They had a couple of guys out there mowing it and stuff. We have some issues down there, though, with the rubbish. And I know it's kids, and there was empty bottles all over the court and stuff. And when my daughter-in-law went to the playground, it was a complete disaster. There was dirty diapers in the rubbish. There was frying pans in the rubbish. I don't know why the frying pans were in the-
Somebody had to cook out.
But it was just, it was just a complete mess. And I did speak to the president of Little League on Saturday, and he didn't have no knowledge of the rubbish barrels filled. He says they're supposed to take care of the fields, just at the baseball fields and right outside the baseball fields, not the rest of the fields. The street hockey, that's a disaster. Someone's going to get hurt, and that liability is going to be to the town. That, there's boards broken, nails and stuff coming out of the boards. And I just feel as though that a little more attention has to be, paid attention to down there. And also, strong field had the rubbish all over the place. That was cleaned up. So that was okay. But, you know, now with school in session, you can't take the kids down the playground. She walks them every day.
Right.
But she could take them down there. And I'd just like to discuss on how we can work on this here to see that it is picked up all the time. It is a lot better now than it was before, but it was a complete disaster.
Sure, yeah. Well, thank you for letting us know because, you know, we don't always know unless somebody tells us. We did reach out to John Haynes last week, and I know, Peter, you said you called earlier. But we did get an email back from John Haynes this morning talking about that he had reached out to, well, I can just read it. He said, "Currently, there are numerous open-top trash barrels located throughout the complex in close proximity to each play area. The coaches and volunteers are responsible for emptying these barrels after games. I am proposing eliminating these barrels throughout the complex and placing multiple large 96-gallon closed-top toters at the entrances and exits to the complex. Working with the Public Services, our Tom White Collection and Disposal Contractor, these toters would then be emptied regularly during the week. Hopefully, this would eliminate the ongoing issues, litter blowing out of barrels and trash being left beside the barrels once they are full." He said he's not sure that this will eliminate the issue entirely, but it should make a significant difference and take some of the burden off of the volunteers. And then, once he has gotten feedback from the Little League, he will coordinate with Republic-
I just feel as though-
To go ahead-
That's fine to put the big dumpsters there or whatever you want to do, but you still need barrels. Down at the basketball court, they're not going to take their bottles and stuff and go up to, and dump them. You still need barrels there.
I think these are the barrels.
These, yeah, these are, these are barrels.
Yeah, it's like the ones you see, like the blue barrels with like the yellow tops.
Oh, sure, there was one down there.
Yeah.
And that one there didn't have anything in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll be putting, I think, multiple-
So it'll be those. You have multiple large barrels at the entrances and exits to the complex.
I'd like to see what-
Hopefully, people, we need some Boy Scouts down there to teach people to take it with you.
Yeah, right, right, you know. Especially, you know, dirty diapers there out there and stuff, frying pans and stuff, you know.
That's just weird. That's just weird.
But we have to discuss what we're going to do with the hockey rink now. You know, the street hockey, the town spent a lot of money on that, you know. It was the Recreation Department, and it's just a disaster now.
Okay.
Just, I'd like to see something else more-
Okay, and I'm not familiar with that. I know, Peter, you've been working with Recreation.
Yeah, so me, I've known Bernie a long time, and we had a long discussion the other day. It's the same discussion I keep going back to. Without a rec department, we're going to have issues all over the field. Me and Brian spent countless hours meeting with them, going over them. You're actually, still a little my thunder because I was going to speak about that a little later on in board discussions. But it is, it is a problem. Not, there are many problems in the town without having a strong recreational department. Things like this could obviously be discussed and taken care of at a quick fashion. But until we have control over those fields and of those structures, we're going to run into issues consistently. Having John and his department go down there to clean it up or to put barrels out and pick them up, it's, to me, it's, it's just a Band-Aid until we have an actual plan intact. We have got something in the works. Again, there'll be a little more discussion about that a little further on tonight, but it's basically what we talked about, you know, accountability, and we need to do that. You know, the town has been lucky that we've had the organizations that we have had, and they've taken a big role, you know, the soccer and the baseball mostly. But at the same time, you know, the town doesn't, loses that control of really what is happening on those fields and what needs to be done without having somebody out there to take a look at it. So that's been one of my larger pushes in the last few months. And again, like I said, you know, we'll get there. There's no doubt in my mind. It's just a matter of getting some information and then putting that information into the process of taking care of it.
Has anybody heard about the soccer fields being, it's going to be in use again? Because that was talked, Saturday, they're going to stop playing soccer down there again. But the only problem is there's wires cut somewhere in between. And I guess they've been looking to see where the wires were cut, but that's, they want to play soccer back down there.
I've seen emails. I don't, I'm not particularly sure if they're going to play soccer this fall. Maybe they are. But like I said, you know, if they, if they are doing that, I'm sure the Associate Soccer Station, who's been a huge advocate of the fields on Belmont Street and the upper field at Church Street-
At Belmont Street, they took a ride down there, and it's really clean.
And the upper field at Church Street will certainly let us know, you know, what needs to be done. I mean, that's, it's been communication, really, is what the problem has been in the past. It's just, you know, these organizations work strong as a group, but the town really has no, no idea of what's happening. And, you know, our bigger, I mean, trash is an issue. The structure's falling apart are an issue. But insurance and, you know, what the liability, as you spoke to, is even a bigger issue. And, you know, we're, you know, we've set down a course to try to get that, that information back and try to restructure that rec department to have that accountability of those organizations and to figure out what the best path is to go. So when I say sooner or later, I mean, much sooner than later. We're going to have, we're going to have that, those answers for sure.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in. We appreciate it. Is anybody else here for open forum? I do have one thing that I wanted to bring to open forum because it was a phone call that we received today from a resident asking about what we were planning to do regarding Halloween. And they wanted to know where the town stands on trick-or-treating and whether we would be canceling that or letting it go forward. And I'm going to have Mr. Noble speak more specifically on this, but our general opinion is that Halloween is a holiday that government does not get involved with. There are guidelines from the state, but in terms of us taking any sort of official position or recommendation, we say that you should follow the guidelines and do what you feel comfortable with. I think it's a longstanding tradition that if you're not comfortable with trick-or-treating, leave your lights off. And, you know, don't, don't feel like that's an obligation. It's a choice. But Brian, I know you put some things on the website today about this-
We put the Department of Public Health's guidance for handling Halloween on the front page of the town's website, and it is a direct quote from the DPH, including the links to certain documents about how to, how to even give out candy. So I think we've, we've, that's about as far as I think government goes on Halloween. It comes down to an individual choice. So we, we put the guidance out there. It's available, it's available from the state. It's on social media because I know that the Board of Health posted it on social media. So it's, it's now out there.
But, all right.
Again, that's a suggestion from the state. It's not a requirement. You know, as they've said, it all comes down to your individual, how you feel about it. If you're not comfortable with people, again, they say put it at the end of your driveway and stuff like that. But, you know, like Carol would be there first, wouldn't you take them all? And there wouldn't be anything left for anyone else.
I think that would be Brian.
Maybe not working all cases.
Brian's eliminated candy for Halloween. All right.
I'm sorry, I should probably throw this out as open forum. I was just thinking about it.
That's okay.
So the town has gone through a certification period after five years, and we have preliminary certification from the state. And the next step is called a public disclosure. So that will begin on Thursday, October 1st. It'll be on the front page of the website and with a link to our assessed values. I'll give you everything when we get it. So you can go in there and you can look at your value, and then you, it gives the public a week's chance to go and look at your new values. And then, if you have any questions, you can call the assessor's office.
Okay.
So we haven't done this in five years. It used to be every three, and now it's been five. So on average, values went up between 2% to 6%. 6% is closest on average, as everybody probably can imagine from what we, from the sales in the town. So just a little heads up that that'll be out there. And I'll give you all the information tomorrow to put up on the, on the site. We're just finishing up since Friday, so.
Okay.
Is that commercial property as well as personal, or is it commercial property as well as?
Every, all the property in the state, all the property in the town, yeah. So it's all been certified, and we, you know, made all our checks, and they were fine with everything that we gave them. So now this is just the second part, before the final goes out, and then you'll get your tax bills in December. And we'll set the tax rate in November, so.
Great, all right, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, is anyone else here for open forum? All right, seeing no one, I will close open forum, and I will invite our auditors to come up and give us an update on the FY '19 audit. FY '19 seems like a lifetime ago, doesn't it?
Good evening. I'm Rob Lynch with Lynch Marina and Associates, and we're the auditors for the town. We performed the audit for fiscal '19, and I've prepared an update, a summary update that I'll go through as I've done in the past to go through the objectives of the audit process. The main objective is to express an opinion on the town's financial statements that they're presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The audit was conducted in accordance with government auditing standards, so we have issued reports related to the internal control and compliance with laws and regulations, as well as the town expended more than $750,000 of federal funds, so they were required to have a single audit under the uniform guidance. Management's responsibilities in the audit are for designing, implementing, maintaining internal controls over financial reporting and compliance with laws and regulations, establishing financial policies and procedures, ensuring financial information is reliable and properly reported, and preparation of the financial statements in accordance with GAAP. And through the audit process, we provide assistance with taking the town's trial balance and getting it into the GASB-GAAP financial reporting model. But ultimately, the responsibility remains with the town for those. So the results of the audit, we did render an unqualified opinion on the financial statements, meaning they're presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with GAAP. In our report on government auditing standards, we did identify a significant deficiency related to cash account reconciliations. That was primarily with the vacancy that you had in the treasurer's office. The reconciliations weren't getting done for that time period, so under the requirements, the regulations, that had to be reported. But that has got corrected by the end of the year, and that's a good thing. We rendered an unmodified opinion on the town's compliance over the major federal programs on the single audit, but we did identify other instances of non-compliance. We did not identify any material weaknesses related to internal control over the federal programs. So the financial statements themselves, there's two sets of statements. The government-wide statements that are on a full accrual basis, recording all the assets and liabilities of the town. They present the governmental activities, which is your general government, public safety, education, and the business-type activities, the water and solid waste are reported separate from the government-wide. The town's total net position for June of '19 was $5 million. Again, as you said, this is looking back in the past 19. You're in '20, and you're looking forward to, you're in '21, looking forward to the '22 budget, I'm sure.
Can't wait.
That net position was a, was a decrease of $1.8 million from the prior year, which was restated for a change in the OPEB liability measurement date. Total net position was comprised of an unrestricted deficit of $67.7 million, restricted net position of $6 million, and net investment of capital assets of $66 million. The unrestricted net position deficit is primarily due to the reporting of OPEB, liability of $59 million, and the net pension liability of $25.6. The governmental funds are on the modified accrual basis, and that's more similar to how the town keeps the books and records under the Yuma's basis of accounting. But under, on the general fund includes a stabilization fund, and that's reported as a major fund, as long, as well as the school projects and septic water repayment fund. The remaining funds are aggregated as other governmental funds. The total fund balance of the general fund was $12.4 million, which increased $780,000 for the year. Approximately 6.9 of the fund balance was unassigned, meaning it's not restricted or committed for another purpose. As previously noted, the stabilizations are included. At June 30th, 2019, there's 2.4 in the general stabilization, 2.4 million in the town's general stabilization and 4.4 in the capital stabilization fund. And the 4.4 was included as committed fund balance of the capital stabilization. On the budgetary basis, which is unaudited information, but required supplementary information in the financial statements, the general fund budget appropriations were $47 million. Approximately 46.6 of this was, was spent, yielding $415,000 of savings on the appropriation. The final budgeted revenues of $45 million resulted in a favorable variance. You had $46 million of actual. So overall, $2.7 million budgetary excess in the general fund, which, which is the way you want it to be. So no deficits there. And then, we issued a management letter, which management has addressed and responded to. And what we do is on future subsequent audits, we follow up with that. So I'm trying to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you, Rob. Questions?
Nope. Excellent job. I think I'm starting to understand these a little bit.
Takes time.
It takes time. Many.
That's great. Thank you very much for coming in. Thank you for the work that you do. Oh, I'm sorry, Brian.
Apologize. While I still have Rob here, the first item refers to him in the action items.
Do you want to do that?
If you wouldn't mind.
Not at all.
All right, make a motion to vote to authorize town administrator to sign engagement letter for the FY 2020 audit.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, thank you.
Here, Rob.
Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Stay safe.
Yes, everyone else too.
All right, thank you. With that, we will move to our action items. Mr. Spigone?
Okay, action item two, the vote to approve Alan Hiltz from CERT to use the outside of Satcham Rock Farm for the Community Emergency Response Team Annual Exercise Search and Rescue. Set up incident command briefing, set up search teams, proceed with search, extract victims, and perform emergency first aid on mannequins. Time of the event, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Second.
Any discussion?
What is the date on this?
Oh, there isn't.
I guess I didn't put the date. It's a-
Tomorrow.
October, October 31st, 2020.
October 31st.
Halloween?
Yeah.
I don't know about those mannequins.
They do, they do this every year. This is like annual, annual training exercise.
All right.
Okay, I'll bring your candy up to these people.
No.
You're not giving them any up.
Did you second?
Pick it up.
Did you second? Yes, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Vote to authorize to designate the treasurer, Melissa Mercy, as the tax title custodian.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Vote to approve for Virginia O'Kelly's request for Ann Caneely-Heinz Memorial Scholarship Committee to hold a 2020 bench dedication ceremony on the town hall property Friday, October 2nd, 2020, at 2:30 PM. COVID-19-related restrictions will be expected to be followed.
Second.
Any discussion?
As you can see, there is a, a notice here, an invitation to attend, but I'm sorry, you people can't attend because of the restriction number of people that we're having there that day. If you notice, the bench is already in.
It looks nice.
They put that in Monday. It looks fantastic out there. Again, we're just talking about the restrictions. It looks like the weather will be fine, but they're still limited to 50 people. Jamel has, you know, quite a large family, which I think he's going to be having here, so they have sent out very few invitations just to make sure we don't exceed the 50 that are allowed outside.
Yep.
We have, we will move it inside up here with restrictions if the weather is bad. But they have quite a program set, and they've done a tremendous job putting this together. Now, Jamel has waited for quite a while for this bench, but he picked, he picked a spot out here. You know, so that, I guess, would have been where the, the old gym was in the, in the school. So he's overlooking the old gym.
Oh, right, nice.
And, you know, when I talked with John Haynes, that was the most level and the best place to put it. It's right in Center Field, so we'll have a great view of the entire field out there. Hopefully, we'll have great weather and-
Weather looks good.
Okay. It'll be all set.
Excellent. I know, Peter, your family was honored a few years ago with this. And my family was honored. You need to get to work on that.
Who do I contact?
Ginny O'Kelly.
Yeah, I guess.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Vote to approve to extend the expansion of temporary outdoor table service or extensions of earlier granted approvals issued pursuant to Section 4 of the COVID-19 Order Number 351 from November 1st, 2020, for any period up to and until 60 days after the end of the state of emergency.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Discuss and vote on request from Library Director Christopher McGee to close the library Saturday, December 26, 2020, and Saturday, January 2nd, 2021.
Second.
Discussion.
I think if you read out the request from, you know, Mr. McGee, it made sense the way he was trying to do this. If not, we would have been changing schedules for two weeks for everyone in the business.
Yep.
It worked. Good, good, good thought process on Mr. McGee.
Yep, absolutely. All right, any, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Authorize Animal Control Officer Alex, Alexis?
Yeah.
Sorry. Xavier to issue noncriminal violations to dog owners who have not licensed their dogs as of Thursday, October 1st, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Review and sign agreement for engineering services between East Bridgewater and Weston Sampson Engineering, Inc.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, let's speak on this. So we have spent a long time working on, hopefully getting an agreement with the city of Brockton to bring some storage to the Route 18 corridor from the town line in Whitman to Highland Street. We've met with not only the business owners and landowners of that corridor, but also have met with multiple departments, even as early as last week, meeting with the Finance Committee, which they all agreed this agreement would get the services of Weston Sampson for $29, $29.9 to do a feasibility study in that area, which was requested by the city of Brockton in order to see if there's a potential to come in from Brockton directly to East Bridgewater so we can avoid having to do a municipal agreement between three towns, which would be Whitman as well. So this is the beginning stages. We feel, myself and I think Brian will agree, we feel extremely excited about the potential and the ability here to see this happen and see something other than space buildings on Route 18. So we're going to work towards that, and this is the first step.
That's excellent. Thank you for the explanation. Any further discussion?
No, I'm good.
Good job. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Vote to appoint Assistant Treasurer.
Second.
Discussion?
We have both the young ladies here that applied for the job and interviewed for the job, and I'm presenting them both at the same time, both Assistant Treasurer and Assistant Collector for appointment by the board this evening.
Okay.
Would you ladies like to come up and say something?
No.
Do you want to think?
That's fine.
Do you want to think about that for a second? What do you mean they left the room?
They've been doing the job essentially since July, and they've been doing an excellent job. And it is, the Treasurer Collector's Office hasn't skipped a beat. And I think that a lot of that credit goes obviously to Melissa and her team, now composed of both Carrie and Megan.
Good. All right. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Vote to appoint Assistant Collector.
Second.
Any-
Have you changed your mind yet? Would you like to? Okay.
Any discussion?
Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the work you've done.
For everything you've done over the summer, in the fall.
That we can make it a formal thing. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There you go, congratulations.
Vote to approve minutes of the September 14th, 2020, 6:30 PM Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Vote to adopt the town administrator's review process.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, when do you anticipate and how do you want to go about the first step in going through this process?
So the first step is to adopt the-
Sorry.
Right, to adopt the process, which we have gotten from Town Council. And I would say, and then the next step is to, for each of us to meet individually with Mr. Noble. And you have that, you have the review instrument, and then, so you guys need to schedule a meeting with Brian. Brian, in your timeframe, can we do that by like the end of October? Have those meetings done and your self-assessment done? And then we submit those to Town Council. So I would say if you can do it in the next couple of weeks, great, but definitely by the end of the month. That is, okay.
Yep, I agree.
Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 That's it.
Great, thank you very much. Rebecca, nope, sorry, Brian. Look at that, I skipped right over you.
That's okay. I have nothing for you this evening. I'll make it quick and simple.
What's that? You have nothing?
Nothing for you this evening.
Wow. Can you please put that in the minutes?
We put that red-
In that very-
Can we red flag that somewhere?
In bold.
I just have one announcement. I got an email today about the pumpkin scavenger hunt slash pumpkin walk that is typically held every year. There, they sent an announcement stating they are not holding the typical annual pumpkin walk this year due to COVID-19. Instead, they're holding an outdoor self-guided scavenger hunt along six town trails. Bennett Lane, Leland Farm, the Trails of Satcham Rock Farm, Town Forest, the Trails at YMCA,[1743.08] at YMCA, and the Trails at Poor Meadow Brook. Visit these sites and locate laminated pumpkins and see if you can find the gold pumpkin. Then send your photos with these pumpkins to the Friends of East Bridgewater Trails. It runs October first through November first. It's free and open to all. If you visit these trails in groups, please be sure to follow proper social distancing rules and stay safe. Visit the Friends of Trails Facebook page for more information or email F E B trails at gmail dot com. Don't forget to send your photos so we can post them on the Facebook page.
That's great.
And that is all I have.
Boy discussions, fall town meeting. If it's December, is that winter town meeting or is it still fall?
Late fall.
It's still fall. Winter's not until December twenty-first.
Winter is coming. I think we talked about the date of December seventh?
Yes.
Brian, do you want to...
December seventh.
Specifically to that, or?
Which is a day that will live in infamy.
And even more so if we have town...
We will have to, if we pick December seventh, we will definitely have to adopt the same COVID rules that we did for the annual town meeting. And also, my recommendation to the board is only the necessary articles to go forward. And we, I'll backdate, give you some suggestions on when we should open the one, when we should close. Our posting requirement is fourteen days plus the day of the posting plus the day of the meeting, so sixteen days.
Okay.
And then give a chance for any department that has any, or board that has any particular concerns that need to come forward, to have the opportunity to do that and to present any, any concerns to this board.
Okay. Any...
Again, my only thought on that is we may have more information from the state by then, which could adjust some of the articles that we may, you know, bring up at the fall time.
I'm thrilled with your optimism.
I was going to say, that's so optimistic of you, Mr. Sheehan.
One of us has to be.
Not usually expecting that.
One of us has to be.
Yeah. Hopefully, we'll have something to go by. Who knows, right?
I think that the concern I have is that the deficit isn't going away, and I don't see any, I don't see any action on the part of the federal government to, to do another form of CARES Act. So sooner or later, we're going to have to pay the piper.
Did you need to be recognized, Mr.?
Well, I wasn't, I didn't, wasn't, I'm...
I'll speak last, probably good.
...but we have to set a tax rate, and setting, and having a late date like that is pretty tight to the end of December. And there's a lot of, a lot going on with the state because people are behind, so I just, you know, I just want to make sure that's, that's, that will be okay, or with the Department of Revenue, we're getting kind of close with, if we have things that have to be considered for the budget to finalize the recap.
Yeah. I don't think that it should affect anything to do with nine C or anything to do with certifying. So I don't see that as a problem.
Okay.
But just definitely talk to me tomorrow, but I think I've walked this through. I think we're okay.
Okay. Good. I just didn't know exactly what was on that agenda, so...
It should not, it should not affect the setting of the tax rate at all.
Okay.
And shouldn't slow you down.
Okay. Great.
In fact, this board still needs to do the tax hearing, so...
Yeah. We'll do that like probably a little later this year. Okay. I was just worried that we were going to...
Well, you guys can confirm that tomorrow. We can always move it forward if we need to, but...
Right. I like Dave's original suggestion.
Dave's original suggestion? Thanksgiving morning?
Friday morning, after Thanksgiving.
The Friday morning after Thanksgiving.
Like Friday at eight o'clock.
Yes. Why not six AM? Okay. Anything else to bring before the board?
You got something, Dave?
I just have a quick question on the, on the Fields Center Church Street. Do we have direct camera between the police down there that they...
Not to my knowledge. I don't think we've talked about moving...
I thought we had to some of it.
You don't talk about security issues in a public meeting, please.
Amazon Security.
What would you call them, then?
People taking pictures. Okay. We'll discuss it later, then.
Yeah.
Not as a board.
I'll talk to the police afterwards.
Peter, you had...
Yeah. So I got a couple of things here. So, yeah, well, it's not really an update. I just heard from PJ Ferry, the chairman, this morning, and he hasn't really got any response from our original letter, and it's only been a couple of weeks at the same time, though. So what I've, what I think we should do at this point is maybe whoever those individuals are, he has a letter, the letters that were sent out. Maybe the board can take a look at who those individuals are that are the directors of those organizations, and we should probably reach out to them and, you know, let them know that we really want to...
Why don't we send out a certified letter and request them to come to a meeting?
Could do that. We could do that. I want to take a little easier approach first, but...
They've ignored the first request.
Well, yeah. I mean, and this is the tough part. I mean, we've had so many years of, of these, you know, organizations doing so much on their own, so to speak. I just felt like, and the individuals I think that you'll find that are on this list are people that we either know personally or we have some sort of relationship with. So I think just, for instance, the basketball program, Brett and Jen Poole would be an easy contact for me to, to talk to about them. And, you know, again, we've got to keep in mind, these are volunteers. These aren't, you know, people that are running businesses. So what I'd like to do is just, you know, I, I think Brian's got the letters that, that were sent out to each of those individual, or Rebecca. Just get the names, and we can kind of just take a look at who they are, and just tell them that, you know, it's, it's not real urgent, but at the same time, we'd like to see something sooner than later, as, as I said earlier today, just to kind of push the issue, just so we can get our hands around this, this subject, for sure.
I think that's a fair approach. It's not going to be a certified letter.
All right. Well, I'd like to put a more urgent request on it, then.
Yep.
Yes. We asked for a lot of information, so it doesn't surprise me that it would take them a couple of weeks to put some stuff together. We asked for a lot.
But a personal phone call sometimes is the thing that kind of moves it.
Help them along.
Yeah. And they've got a few more days. I think the letter was dated for the end of September, for sure, but we don't meet again, or at least in a couple of weeks, so I felt it was necessary just to kind of discuss, you know, reaching out to them.
Why don't we all look at the list and see who we have for connections?
Yeah. Pick the, pick people that we know anyways.
The Arts Council, I know you put a request out, asked me to get some bodies out there. They're really having a hard time finding people to, to do. They're going to have a meeting on October fifteenth. I am scheduled for, I don't know, so maybe next week or right after that, me and Dave Cronin, to go to the school committee meeting. So we'll speak a little bit more to trying to get help from the schools directly. What kind of threw me off, they had a meeting last week that, that I attended, and they've got a lot of money, and some of that money could be utilized for the arts in the schools, for the art classrooms, or for the music, and, and I just think that that needs to be expressed to the administrators as well as to the teachers, so that we can get them in. And then maybe we can find a few individuals that are even involved with those, those programs or the schools that would, would like to come out and, and work, because, you know, they've got a lot of ability to do a lot of good things in, in the community, but without, without bodies, it's, you know, three of us sitting around looking at each other, yeah. So we're going to, I am going to meet with the, with the school committee with Dave, David, I believe, next week, and we'll see if we can get some momentum from there, and then we'll move forward.
It's actually, I mean, I was on Arts Council years ago. It's a lot of fun.
Yeah. There's a lot of things that can be done. Yeah. They're, they're talking about, I mean, you're going to see, I mean, they're talking about doing a fall festival next September, about a year from now, and making it an indoor-outdoor program where, you know, maybe we can get the friends from the trails to, to be involved as well. We can get some art being done inside, expressed inside, music outside. I mean, it's, a lot of towns have had major success with this, but they have a lot of help.
Yep.
And, and this is just really the, the problem with, with this group. And like I said, I think once we get the, the word out publicly, publicly a little bit more, you'll see some, hopefully some, some people...
They have in the past, they've had art shows and everything else at the center with music on and everything else. It's a matter of just regrouping and...
Yep.
How many openings do they have? Rebecca, do you know?
They had nine, they told me, at their high point, and there's four on...
So they can have up to nine?
Yeah. So they have four members currently, right now. Three of them were at the meeting on Thursday, I think it was, or Wednesday night.
Well, maybe the three people watching our meeting will...
What? It should be up to seven.
I think they're able to have seven.
And you can always do alternates.
Yeah. I think they're able to have seven, two alternates.
Seven plus alternates. Okay.
So they're probably three.
Yep.
Yeah. Three and then two.
Excellent.
You can always have people volunteering and not officially on the board, so...
Oh, yeah.
Right.
My last two, just really, just kind of get an update. I was, wanted to kind of speak to Brian on this. So, you know, I've only been here for a short period of time, not really knowing how the beginning of the, the insurance went. Is that something you could give us a little, like, give us a briefing on? Like, I know we went to, for the health insurance.
Thank you.
You went out to the, to the market, obviously, which I think is...
When I first arrived, one of the concerns expressed to me by employees generally was that they were dissatisfied with their out-of-pocket expenses and deductibles on the GIC plan. So we formed an insurance advisory committee, and on the committee was a representative of all the collective bargaining agreements and non-union employees and retirees. The idea was to look at the plans that we had and shop if there were possibilities, and if there was a possibility to then come back and make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen for further investigation. And then the committee has met on average of once a month, except for the COVID months. And we have, as you know, a health insurance advisor. We did switch from Cook &amp; Company to NFP. Cook &amp; Company traditionally had had the contract. NFP has actually been helpful because where Cook &amp; Company had sent us our increase for the dental plan without much ado, when NFP took over, they went back to the dental plan, and they came back with a flat rate for the following year. So they have actually made an impact already. They're also half the price of Cook &amp; Company, which I liked. They have, they prepared based upon our loss ratios, profile of the town, and circulated it among joint purchasing agreements, meaning other towns that have formed together, Mayflower Group, is another one, Constellation, et cetera, for shopping purposes, and also went out to independents like Harvard Community, Tufts, Fallon, et cetera. We didn't get many responses. We only got basically one response from Harvard, and it wasn't a knock-your-sox-off proposal. So it sort of comes down to the fact, and I don't want to prejudge the process or anything, but it's very important that if we look at something that we are going to possibly recommend a board, to the board to change, to make a change, there are many moving parts, the least of which is it has to be an improvement for the employees, and it has to be an improvement for the town. There has to be a win-win. In addition, some changes, if they were modest changes, still, or I should say, really